Did you say you're all set, Madam Administrator? A couple of you probably still have your computer, you think it's, the sound is off, but it is not off if the, there is an echo. So, a couple of you need to check to make sure your sound is off, and I can't tell who that is. So, we're gonna start the meeting. Representative Nolan says if you look on, and you have your state computer, the F1 key is how you can tell. If the F1 key is lit up, then you know it, but it, somebody must have done it, so it looks like we're all set. So, we're gonna call the public hearing to order, thank you all for being here. And, I'm going to start by introducing the, and asking for comments from the chairs and the ranking members, Representative Walker.
I just want to say good afternoon to everybody, and it's great to be back in the 2C, in the Office of Appropriations, I call it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Barthol.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, thank you, it's good to be back here as well. And I think we have a very important piece of business before us today, looking forward to hearing the testimony from those that are here, thank you.
Representative Nuccio.
Thank you, Madam Chair, first off, this is not a new, first time for me back, it's an actual first time in one of these meeting rooms, so, I may not have all the buttons correct yet, but I'm looking forward to today. I am a strong supporter of our police and understanding the issues that face them and the problems we have with retention, so I'm eager to hear all the testimony, and I look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you. First up is the Undersecretary from the Office of Labor Relations, David Kryeski, and Commissioner Rovella, and I understand, Mr. Kryeski, you have Mr. Peterson, Mr. Duskell, Ms. Krasdeski, and Mr. Lafayette, and Ms. Stryker. I don't know if all of them are gonna speak, or just you. Alright, Commissioner, you wanna join him at the table too? In case there's any questions directly for you. The floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairs Austin and Walker, Vice Chairs Hartley, Exum, and Paris, Ranking Members Barthol, Nuccio, and distinguished members of the Appropriations Committee.
So, sometimes our microphones don't work well, so you have to kinda move it over a little bit towards you, there you go, thank you.
Is that better? Great. My name is David Kryeski, and I am the Undersecretary for the Office of Labor Relations at the Office of Policy and Management. As the State's Chief Negotiator of the July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2026 NP1 State Police Contract, I am pleased to be here to present testimony and to answer any questions that the committee may have. Today with me in person and virtually are the additional management bargaining team members Eric Peterson, Christina Grodzicki, Laura Stryker for the Office of Labor Relations, OPM Budget Team members Matt Daskel and Matt Lafayette, Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Commissioner James Rovella, and Colonel Steve Malikas. You will hear quite a bit of testimony today about the commitment and dedication of the men and women of the Connecticut State Police. Their work permeates our everyday lives, far beyond the roadways of Connecticut, ensuring our safety. Today, I will focus on the agreement before you and how we arrived at those changes. When we began negotiation, the negotiation process, there were several goals that the State wanted to accomplish in these negotiations. Our priority was to incentivize the hiring and retention of the best and brightest law enforcement professionals. The most recent exodus of state employees due in part to the change in pension calculations was especially significant to the Connecticut State Police. Most of the command staff, captains, majors, lieutenant colonels retired all around the same time, and the overall number of state troopers dropped to low 800s. This is a critical moment for the Connecticut State Police. While Governor Lamont and the Connecticut General Assembly have invested in trooper trainee classes, the number of candidates in each class were at about 50% upon day one. We needed to maximize the investment we were making in these classes to ensure the future of this organization. While today's workforce may be markedly different than workforce of 10 years ago, we did notice several factors that could be addressed in collective bargaining agreement. To increase class size, prioritize the quality and diversity of the candidate pool. First, trooper, trainee compensation. Historically, the compensation for a trooper trainee was a flat annual rate. The prior agreement set that rate at $50,000 for the period of a four-year agreement. Even as the rest of the state troopers would move up with general wage increases or steps, the trainee pay was fixed. The rate of $50,000 was no longer competitive, and we could not compete for talent with towns, municipalities, and other states. The national rate of inflation especially compounded this issue. This agreement sets a trooper trainee rate at 10% below year one of trooper pay, so it adjusts with the general wage increases as the troopers' wages change as well. Trooper trainees will now start at $64,038 per year. Next, trooper compensation. As we looked at the trooper training classes over the last several years, we noticed a reduction in the number of currently certified police officers making the transition to the Connecticut State Police ranks. A driving factor to that change was compensation. Our towns and municipalities were now paying more than the state. The existing officers with several years of experience were less likely to take a dramatic pay cut to enter our academy. We believe this added to the reduced class size and reduced the quality of candidates with prior law enforcement experience. This agreement takes the first two steps off of the trooper pay plan and eliminates them, creating a new starting pay for a year one trooper upon graduation at $71,153. An additional effort to attract existing police officers with at least two years of experience to be hired at the same rate as a two-year trooper while at the academy. They would then come in at $73,375. Training and education. As stated earlier, attracting and retaining the best and brightest law enforcement professionals does not end at the date of hire. Historically, this contract provided a one-time, one-time $500 lump sum for a trooper that attains a college degree of a bachelor's degree or higher. Additionally, there are annual funds for training and tuition reimbursement to aid the ongoing professional development of staff. This agreement also incentivizes the pursuit of continuing education and increases the tuition and training funds. It also changes the $500 lump sum one-time payment to an annual stipend for having attained a bachelor's or higher degree. This agreement also incentivizes senior troopers to act as field training officers. These FTOs, as they're so-called, are the side-by-side, real experienced trainers guiding the field training and evaluating trainees while on the job. This is a critical function that carries immense responsibility for the future trooper ranks and is compensated with an additional hour of overtime for each shift that someone acts as an FTO. Retention and wellness. As we approached the retirement cliff this summer, it became apparent that the troopers with 20-plus years of experience have little incentive to remain employed with the state, given the changes with the pension. As noted earlier, this agreement eliminates the first two steps of the play plan, condensing it to eight steps. It also creates a top step lump sum bonus for those individuals at top step of 2% per year. Doesn't increase their pay, it's a lump sum bonus, as an incentive to retention, especially for those with more than 20 years. Commissioner Rovella expressed his concern for the overall wellness of the members of the NP1 bargaining member and their families, given the impact this career can have on them. The concept of a wellness stipend was created. This agreement funds an annual $500 wellness stipend for members that may be used for gym memberships or other outside workplace wellness activities for them and their families. I would like to close my testimony today with an observation that puts some of these changes into perspective. While working on this contract and conducting some research, a banner popped up on my computer. It was a recruitment ad for police officers in a municipality in New England, small city Burlington, Vermont. Starting pay was $71,000 a year. That was $21,000 higher than a Connecticut State Trooper. Additionally, there was an option to move up seven steps in their pay plan based on how many years you had as a certified police officer. If we wanted to fulfill our investments in the upcoming trooper trainee classes, we needed significant change. And with the support of Governor Lamont, Commissioner Rovella, and the work of the negotiating committees, this agreement allows us to compete for the best and the brightest to serve the residents of Connecticut. Thank you, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kreski. Commissioner, do you wanna say a few words now also? And don't forget to turn that button on.
Thank you. We did decide that David would give our opening remarks. To my left is Colonel Malikas of the Connecticut State Police. Both of us are in full support of ratification for this contract. We worked very hard with David and the NP1 Union to solidify my thoughts and our objectives into this contract. So, I'm here to answer more so all the questions you may or may not have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for either Mr. Kryeski or Commissioner Rovella relative to the contract that we have in front of us, relative to the contract that we have in front of us? Representative Felipe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I am, in front of me, I'm looking at the fiscal note that was given to us, and it does say that the State and the Union may negotiate no sooner than January 1, 2025, the general wage increase from '26. Does that mean that we are required to have a general wage increase in 2026?
We will be negotiating a wage reopener in 2026, which is very similar to the pattern we negotiated with the CBAC Coalition for all the other collective bargaining agreements that were submitted last session.
That was my only question, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions, Representative Nuccio?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for the work that you guys have put into this. I've read the contract, and I, I'm supportive of the changes that are in there, but I'm wondering, Commissioner, specifically for you, we've definitely seen a drop-off with the retirement, and we're seeing lower class sizes coming in. Do you think this is gonna be received well, and it will enable us to get more people in there, or do you think we need to go further in other areas?
That's a good question. Let me start a little before your question to indicate that presently there's 877 Connecticut State Troopers. I did request in my last staffing study that I believe the thousand would be financially sound, and I did say 1,100 troopers would get us back to business, and there'd be a new report coming out in February of '23. So, we've hired, we've lost 357 due to retirements over the last four years, and we've hired 341 troopers. So, we're a little behind with 36 in the academy, and I think this is where I'm going with your answer to the question. Around the country, there's been problems hiring public service folks, whether they're troopers or police officers or firefighters or nurses or teachers, and you can go down the line and find these problems. I think we're going for the next couple of years, we're gonna have classes of 30 to 40, we're class after class after class. So, we think recovery will be in about two years to get to some of my lower numbers.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Senator Winfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair, my question is about Article 9. I'm sure you know there's been a lot of conversation about what exactly it does. Can you, can you walk the committee through what Article 9 does?
Certainly, thank you, Senator. So, Article 9 is contract language having to do with access to information that's found in the official personnel file. So, in the last round of the contract, language was added to the agreement that said, and I will quote, "An employee's official personnel file and internal affairs investigation with only dispositions of exonerated, unfounded, or not sustained shall not be subject to the Freedom of Information Act." That was added in the last contract. We struck that in this contract, in part because of the change with Police Accountability Act that came in after this contract language, some of the legal challenges to that confluence of language. So, we felt it prudent after one contract cycle to take that language out because we understood the issues associated with that language. So, we address that in this contract cycle. The other language associated with this contract regarding access to information is approximately 15 to 19 years old. And that language has to do with hearings regarding disciplinary action being private, that is negotiated language between the parties, and then the access to information and an individual's ability to perhaps, if there's a potential invasion of privacy, file a petition, for lack of a better word, with the FOI Commission to have a ruling as to whether or not that information should be released or not. So, all that language is still in there, and that is very similar to the language that is found in the statute. I hope I answered your question, Senator.
Yep, I think, I think that you, I think that you did. I just want for clarity, for clarity, I just wanna make sure that I have it, I believe I do, right? So, the language that was struck was the newer language that went in a cycle ago. In terms of bargaining history, the rest of the language is historically language that has been in place for several sites, several contract cycles. So, if the legislature has an issue with that, that is stuff that, as a legislature, we could take up separately, but it's not a, it's not something that obviates the language of the, what we call the police accountability law, is that correct?
I believe that is correct, sir.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Balinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Kryeski and Commissioner Rovella. Thank you very much for doing the most thankless job in the state of Connecticut, maybe. I have, I have a couple of questions of concern. You know, as I was looking at the contract and the fiscal note particularly, the, and we're talking about a year three or year four fiscal impact of $22 million and change. That's not, not in question, and not something that I'm about to make a fuss over, but something that Mr. Kryeski said that really, really alarmed me was that our trooper count is below 800. As I looked at the fiscal note, and as I looked at my last recollections, we were at 888. And that set off bells because we all know that we've been understaffed for just about every year that I've been in service here, which is a long time. The job that you do is so incredibly important, and we've been trying for the 10 years I've been here to get, get the trooper count up, you know, to the standard of what I've always believed was somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200. So, I'm very, very concerned with, with the ability for us to not just recruit into that new model of public protection, which is completely necessary, but our ability to compete. So, there was an anecdotal comment about, you know, a small-town police officer in, you know, in Vermont making much more money than a Connecticut State Trooper. And I believe in this contract, it appears as if we're, you know, we're making some significant progress. I don't wanna, I want our expectation to be full staff and fully protected as a state, so how does this contract stack up relative to those that we most closely compete with? What, what are we offering our law enforcement professionals relative to our neighbors in New York, Massachusetts, Rhode Island? And, and are we going to, you know, recruit ourselves to 1,200 officers and lose 400 to, to some initiative that occurs in Massachusetts at some point in the not-too-distant future? So, I'm sure that you've researched that, so if you could just share something that assures the people of Connecticut that, you know, not only are we going to get where we need to go, but we are going to enjoy the opportunity to stay there. Thank you, sir, you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative, I just wanted to, flipping through some notes. First, and I may have misspoke, I said low 800s, not below, just for the record, we never, we didn't dip below 800, but low 800s, so, for the record. Your question's well-taken regarding what are others paying. So, if we look at the city of West Hartford, they have a current pay band of $73,000 to $95,000 a year. If we look at Glastonbury, they have a pay band of, on July 1, '24, of $78,000 to $100,000 a year, almost 101. So, we're very, we're now competitive. We're, we have a base wage that is, gives us a chance when somebody is deciding whether or not to pursue a career in law enforcement. So, we have that opportunity. New York, to get to your question on the, the states, for instance, starts off lower at $58,000, but after one year, jumps us and goes to 83. So, there's a, there's a little bit of competition there with our neighbor, right? Same thing with Rhode Island, they have a bi-weekly rate of $1,300 bi-weekly, and their top step stops, tops out around $90,000 a year. So, we're in, we're in better competition with those teams. I don't have Massachusetts, I'm trying to find their data, it's a little tricky. We've, we've, we generally have to like call them and put in an information request to get that, access to that information. What I will also say though, that I do think is critical, is the pay, the change to our pay structure. So, in our research, we discovered that the municipalities and Yale University, for instance, and some of the other folks we compete with have pay, pay steps no more than six, some are three, and Hartford went to zero steps. They went to a flat rate, only changing with general wage increases. A, a police officer on special assignment, meaning they've graduated the academy, is at $86,000 a year. So, we, there was another reason to condense our pay plan, so the troopers could move to top step a little bit quicker, which again makes us more competitive. So, if someone's looking at long-range family planning, perhaps, they could, they could step out where they would be in X amount of years, and we'd be more competitive in that, that way as well. So, we, we believe we're in a better position to compete today, if this passes the General Assembly, than we were before. Thank you.
All set, Representative? One question, sir. You can have one more question, that, that is a question, not a soliloquy question.
Thank you, gentlemen, I'll, I'll leave this probably more in the hands of the Commissioner, but when we look at where we, we ended up at under 800, we know we had the retirement cliff, we know we had, we self-destructed with the way we shifted our retirement plans, which, which drove some folks out. Are there other mitigating factors that, aside from money, aside from the retirement cliff? Are there other mitigating factors, for instance?
So, this is, we're asking a question about the contract, Representative? So, and we're not under 800, we're at 877, I believe they said, and so, we've not gone under 800. But, relative to the contract in front of us, do you have a question relative to the contract in front of us? We're not delving into our policy.
Try and come back later.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate that. Representative Porter, followed by Representative Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanna go back to Article 9, Section C, and ask you if there has ever been an instance where this has been applied. And that's what Senator Winfield was addressing earlier. Article 9, Section C. That would be fine if you wanna state, state what it is for the record, that would be fine with me.
Thank you. When an employee after notification to him or her that a freedom of information request has been made concerning his or her file objects to the release of that information on the basis of reasonable belief that the release would constitute an invasion of privacy, the employee shall petition the Freedom of Information Commission for a stay on the release of said information, and the department shall support the employee's petition and not release the information until FOIC has made a final determination on the issue of whether said release would constitute an invasion of privacy. And then, within that article is the line that we struck, which I think is important, which I tried to express earlier, "An employee's OPF and internal affairs investigation with only a disposition of exonerated, unfounded, or not sustained shall not be subject to the Freedom of Information Commission." That last line has been struck in this agreement. So, with regard to an employee contesting whether or not there's a release of information, yes, that has happened.
Okay, thank you for that answer, and can you just give us an example of what, what instance that may have been?
I don't have the specifics. But, that language is very similar to the language found in the FOI statute, where employees throughout the state of Connecticut, public employees, can, when a agency determines that there is a potential violation of, in an employee's personal privacy, will notify the employee of such, and the employee can then choose, I believe they have seven days, Representative, to then petition to the FOI Commission on to whether or not to release that information. And that release is stayed until that determination is made by the FOI Commission. That does happen, not just in this collective bargaining agreement, but throughout state government.
Thank you for that, and I do understand that, but I think it's also important, and I'll speak for me personally, to have an instance or an example of when this is the case and when it has been allowed, so that I can have a better understanding of what I'm gonna be voting on, so. So that I can have a better understanding of what I'm gonna be voting on, so if that's something that you could, um, supply to the committee. That would be appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative.
Uh, thank you, Madam. Are you all set? Wait a minute. Are you all set, Representative Porter?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Representative Os- Osborne, followed by Representative Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. Um, thank you very much, uh, to you both for being here today, and thank you to the members of your union for the hard work that they have put in. For keeping our s- safety and, and public welfare first in their minds.
Melissa, could you move closer to the mic so we could hear you a little bit better? Thank you.
Try, because I have a much shorter people than I am.
I know.
So anyhow, thank you very much to all the members of your union for all they do to keep us safe, uh, in our state. And a real quick question is that two percent bonus, that lump sum bonus for longevity bonuses, are those eligible for pension inclusion?
Yes, the, the top step lump sum bonus is a pensionable wage, yes.
Okay, and just a quick follow-up, um, with respect to the current levels of staffing that you have. Um, but for the passage of this contract in front of us. Do you feel like your ability to recruit will be hindered and affect the public health and safety and welfare?
Good afternoon. Uh, we believe this contract will enhance. And create more opportunities for folks that wanna come here, um, both in-state and out-of-state to be a Connecticut state trooper.
And do you feel that your ability to do that would be hindered if these types of provisions weren't included in this contract?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representative Harrison.
Uh, good afternoon. Um, I wanna start by thanking you for, uh, the hard work. I know. Doing contract negotiations is never easy. Um, I do have a question. When I was reading through this, um, it says now that you have to have a. Twenty-four hour notice for a shift overtime shift cancellation. And if it's not within that window, they still will receive four hours of overtime pay. Um, so my que- I, I think it's a kind of a twofold question is, um. What was it prior to this? And how many shifts do we expect are gonna be canceled?
Thank you for that question, Representative. Let me just get to that section in the, in the language. I think I, I might have a, uh, correction on, on what you read.
Right behind you, David, right behind you, some, okay, somebody's trying to hand it to you.
So, one, one thing we did change, what would happen, uh. One of the effects of, of staffing, having a reduced staffing number is, we're oftentimes scrambling to cover a shift, part of a shift. Um, and the language we put in there, uh. Sometimes when you're staffing and you're trying to cover shifts, you make calls and those kinds of things, at the last minute. Somebody's training is canceled and they can be on shift, or those kinds of things. And a trooper has already made arrangements for daycare, or something of that nature, and what we did is we did not guarantee them pay. We guaranteed them work, which is different, so we provided the opportunity for them to work a four-hour shift. They could refuse that without necessarily being guaranteed pay, but we're required, we felt that offering the work that they committed to. Uh, was a fair and equitable way to, to go about addressing that, that, uh, potential impact to their family.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Representative Hadad, followed by Representative Nolan and Rep- and Senator Winfield. And just so people know, I'm trying to balance who's in the room here with those who are raising their hands on Zoom. Just be aware of that, so I have Representative Hadad, followed by Representative Nolan, followed by Senator Winfield.
Thank you. Um, I know you're not responsible for the fiscal note in front of us, but there's a couple of underlying facts that I just wanna. Understand, and then I'll have a follow-up question maybe for OFA, right, regarding the fiscal note. The resident state trooper program. Um, in that program, towns pay for the full cost of wages for a trooper assigned. To the resident state trooper, or, a- and, and also the, the normal cost of their fringe rate, am I correct in that assessment?
So I don't have the, um, specifics on exactly how much, um, that would cost. That rate is not set by the, um, Emergency Service and Public Protection, I believe it's set by the, uh, Comptroller's Office.
The fringe rate portion is.
Everything is set by the, um.
I have to interrupt here, just so everybody knows, um, it was actually set by the legislature in the last. Budget, we took all of the, we took a hundred percent of the fringe rate, uh, uh, relative to the re-. To the unfunded liability away from the resident trooper.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure I understand that the fiscal note says there's no municipal impact. Um, but my understanding of resident state trooper program is that when wages increase. So does the normal cost for the fringe rate, and also the wages increase, and my assumption is that cost will be passed on to municipalities. So I'm just, ju- just wanna make sure that my understanding is that's how that works. And then subsequently, maybe when OFA is around, we can ask a question about the, the zero impact that's implied in the fiscal note.
Yes, we'll have, um, Neil, if you could come up, please.
Sure, Neil Ayers, Office of Fiscal Analysis. We looked at the, uh, gross costs that result from the contract, the, the general fund will bear that. To the extent that a municipality, uh, has a resident state trooper. They may end up reimbursing a portion of, of the state's gross cost for the contract. The fiscal note we represent here. Is the gross cost for the contract to the state.
All right, does that, does that mean that if you can, that the town continues to take advantage of resident state trooper? Program that, and this contract were to pass, that there would be some cost would be passed on the municipalities?
Their cost to reimburse the state for the trooper would increase.
Thank you, that's what I wanna check, thank you.
All set, Representative Hadad? Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Up next is Representative Nolan.
Uh, good afternoon. And thank you for being present today.
Go ahead, we can still hear, it's somebody's mic is.
I think Rep. Nolan's, um, Zoom, uh, microphone is off, on, so he's getting an echo.
You need to mute on your Zoom. Yep, now, now just talking to that mic.
Okay. All right.
Technology.
Amazing.
Sir, the floor is yours.
Representative, Representative Porter brought up, uh, Section C and Article Nine earlier. And there's probably a few other reps that have sent messages. Um, Commissioner, would you be able to give the example that was being looked for, or one of your staff being that? That would probably come under your staff's purview. Just so that representatives and senators or staff can understand what an example of, um, that would be.
So I couldn't give you a name of a, uh, trooper or example, but it's been in effect for probably more than, more six months. The process, and it's handled by the legal side of, uh, DESP. It's consistent with the one dash two fourteen. So the language in the new contract just strikes a portion, but we're still consistent with, um, the state statute.
Okay. I, I think what they were hoping for is just some kind of situation where, um. There was an allowance for someone to say that they don't want their information put forth. That is what I think a lot of the representatives or senators might be talking about when we speak on. Someone having an opportunity to say no because of something personal. The curiosity of, is what would be personal, would it be, uh. A, a disciplinary action, would it be that the officer or person committed something that was being taken care of with the department? Without having that example, it makes it challenging for people to decide if they're in agreement with that, so. That's why.
So just to add just a little bit, um, sure. The privacy section really applies to something personal in the trooper's life. Not professional, um, but during a professional inquiry. Personal matters are brought into it. That's the option the troopers have to, um. Um, protest and bring it to the F O I Commission.
So a person would be like health-related or?
Family situations, health. Those matters, yes. I could, I could just tell you that we had one matter. That was actually negotiated by the legal side to the satisfaction of both the trooper and the F O I requestee. Prior to, to going to the, uh, Commission. But I couldn't sit here and cite case after case after case for you.
No, that's understandable. All right, thank you.
And it had to do with a family matter, not a, um, not anything to pretend to the job.
Yeah, I think the difference is people understanding that it's either not a disciplinary issue, or something that where. There's a concern for an officer that might be doing something wrong, and he decides to say. Yeah, I wanna claim that as a personal issue, I don't wanna claim that as something that is different than that, so I think that's what people are trying to understand. So I wanna just make sure there's clarity in that, um, so nobody's thinking. Something that it's not.
It is different than that, as you stated, um, it's, it's personal, and that's the privacy. And it's, it's actually run by the legal side, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, um, Senator Winfield.
Yeah, so, uh, just back on that section again, and I, I kinda hate to be stuck, stuck on the section, but, uh. Your, your answer to me earlier, and I think Representative Porter, uh, indicated that. What you have in that section is similar to what's in the F O I statute. Um, and I know this is existing language, but the contract as a whole was just rebargained, so I think it's appropriate to ask this question. Does it, is it similar to and functions the same, or is the fact that? Uh, the individual officer can suggest that something is private, what makes it similar but different? And also, when you say, uh, in response to, uh, Representative Nolan, that it's. Uh, the kind of thing that I don't think people would have problems with, there's like twenty-plus things in F O I statute. Uh, that are laid out, college records, children, is, is that what you mean, or is that? What, i- is that what it is, or is that what we hope it would be? Is it clear that there, that the, um. Items that are laid out in the statute are what are, are what we are referring to when we talk about privacy? If that, I don't know if that question is completely clear, but hopefully it is.
So Senator, I'll take part two of that, and it refers to, um, Mr. Nolan's question. Um, the matter I'm, I'm speaking about was a, um, a personal family matter. Um, that had no, uh, bearing.
That individual, I'm just saying, as a whole, you're the, are you suggesting to us? That the items laid out in the F O I statute clearly are what we're talking about, or is that? Kind of a thing where that's what some of us mean and others mean a different, I, I just wanna know how clear the, the line is.
The line's very clear for, uh, DESP's legal side, and they would comply with the F O I statutes and the requirements of that statute.
Thank you for that, uh, what about the first part? Can someone answer that?
Senator, I believe, and had, I had this conversation, uh, with, uh, DESP's legal. Uh, affairs folks yesterday, they operationalize it the same way as the. Statute for F O I, so they notify a trooper of an information request when it comes in. If that information request in the eyes of the agency is a violation of, potential violation of the trooper's. Uh, personal privacy, and, and that's the legal department making that decision. Uh, they are then forwarded the notification of the, of the request, along with a contest form. And then they have seven days whether or not to contest. Now, if the agency did not believe it was a invasion of personal privacy, they would only send a notification to the trooper.
So can we ju- can, can I just get extreme clarity on that? So the agency doesn't necessarily, this is a hypo. The agency doesn't believe that it's an invasion of privacy, but the officer does what happens. Under the contract, not under the F O I statute, I understand F O I statute.
Okay, um, under the, under the contract, the, uh, trooper can, it's not contractually bound in the contract. But the trooper can personally send off a, um. A.
Right.
Test form.
What, what does the agency have at that point?
The agency does not, uh, support that claim, according to.
Okay, all right, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Senator.
Up next is Senator Lesser.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Chair, thank you, uh, uh. Uh, Undersecretary and, and Commissioner Revell, and I just wanna say at the outset, um, having spent, um, a lot of time over the last couple of weeks, uh. Uh, with, uh, Representative Williams' family, I just wanna extend my great appreciation to the state police for. Um, their comfort and support over the very difficult time, and it was been, um, a, a measure of solace to the, to the family, so I just wanted to say that. Um, I did have some questions, um, though, about the process here, um, and I just wanna understand, and I don't know if that's better directed towards. Um, uh, you, uh, Undersecretary or to LCO, but, you know, I, I've been on appropriations for a number of years, and. You know, we do have these contracts from time to time, uh, it's my understanding, but my memory is that we've frequently. Vote on the contracts on the committee level, uh, but that there was a change to the statute in twenty seventeen, is that, is that correct? And can you just sort of walk us through that if you can?
Yes, there was a, there was a change in twenty seventeen, uh, so in the past. So, the, the contract, uh, could. Not go to the floor, and after a certain period of time would just automatically be approved. Uh, the change now is that if the contract, uh. Well, first, the contract has to get up to sixty, six hours of debate on the floor, um, and. Then a vote, an actual vote. Uh, and there's time periods set out in that statute.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Kreske, um, sorry, uh, is the L, LCO here? Because this is not just for the state police contract, this is for, Madam Chair. I see Heather.
Heather's participating.
Um, I, I don't have the answer right off the, my fingertips, but I can get that for you. Um, if you want me to get the language of the statute, but that's my understanding, the way it was described. We are having a, a meeting within the timeframe, so it, there would be nothing automatic.
So the six-hour conversa- the six-hour debate that could happen. On the floor of the House or the floor of the Senate is not relative to the appropriations hearing. Um, so I just wanna make sure that we're all, cause this is for every contract that we ever do across the board. Um, do you have any other questions relative to every contract that we get under?
Yeah, so this is a question about every contract, I'm just trying to understand the, the process, and so that is a purely statutory change, that's not in the rules. That's not, you know, bond covenant or anything like that, that's a statutory change.
Was changed as a result of the two thousand and seventeen. Um, and that was, um, I, I would rather have Heather get the statutory language so that we're. Giving the statutory language, so Heather, if you could find that statutory language relative to contracts. So that we're putting O L R on the, and where that can, where, um, Senator Lesser can. Research that information.
Yeah, I'll get right back to you.
Okay, you can look up that. Um, Senator Lesser, do you have any other questions for Mr. Kryeski or the Commissioner?
I do not, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just go to, while we're waiting for Heather to come back to us, I'm going to go to Representative DiCaprio. Representative DiCaprio.
I'm, I'm mute myself here. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Undersecretary. This, my, my question's pretty um, maybe a little simpler, but could you share a little bit about the scheduling of the recruit class? Um, you know, what we have right now, what's in the pipeline? And then with a new contract, you have expectations on uh, you know, what, what we're going to see for, as far as metrics uh, as that goes?
So we manage uh recruit classes not only from um inception, which is the announcement by the D S, we manage it um uh, from class to class to class as we move along. There's a class of approximately thirty-six um trainees presently. They're due to get out um sometime in April. On top of that, the next class will start. The recruitment process um has already occurred. The backgrounds um are being conducted now, so we hope to start at or around April, May for the next class. I can't give you numbers on estimated numbers for those classes. But if you heard my testimony prior, I fully expect thirties and forties um class after class. Um, that's just the national trend. Um, we've projected our classes into the new biennium with O P M. Um, and that budget, I haven't seen that budget yet, but it uh, it really projects a continuing hiring um for Connecticut State Troopers.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Commissioner. Uh, my understanding is uh, we have another L C O with us. Jack, you have the statute. We can ask you for that language for uh Senator Lesser, who I don't know everyone.
Yeah, um, the, this, the, the statute is section five two seventy-eight.
Five two seventy-eight, just to make sure that we can hear you.
Yeah, it's five two seventy-eight, and um, there were changes to it in twenty seventeen. One of them was the, the uh, the timing provisions in uh in uh B four and five on, so, but there are a bunch of different sections that were changed, so I don't know if uh.
He mostly cares about, do we have to vote on contracts now, and how long can the debate be, and what is the requirement in appropriations? Is my understanding of what he cares about. And Representative Hadad, can you see if Senator Lesser's out in the hallway? Please, thank you. Just hold one second. I want to make sure that Representative, that Senator Lesser is getting his answers to his question. Uh, I'm sorry, Senator, but we have the, another L C O here who has the answers to your questions. I want to make sure you hear the answer. Please go ahead, Jack.
Um, so with respect to the timing provisions, um, so it says that each house shall permit not more than six hours of total time for debate for a resolution to approve or reject an agreement. And uh, and then a vote shall be taken on the conclusion of the, of those six hours, and then within the uh last three days of the period, this debate is limited to four hours. Um, so that's the timing. Um, and I'm looking for the provision about the uh, the deemed approval um in a sec.
Jack, I, I think he's talking about the change that was made to B three. If you want to read that.
Great, so it says that if um, if the General Assembly is in session, it shall vote to approve or reject such agreements. The agreement or award shall be deemed rejected if the General Assembly fails to vote to approve or reject such agreement. Um, so I think the change was from deemed approved to deemed rejected. Um, so if the, if the General Assembly fails to vote.
Senator Lesser.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for uh that answer and uh um, well, the committee's uh patience. Just real quick, um, I know we made a bunch of changes to a bunch of things in the twenty seventeen budget. This is purely statutory, right? This language that you're reading, it's not in a bond covenant or uh in the, in the joint rules. Yes, purely in the statute. Great, thank you.
Are you all set, Senator?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Hold one minute, please. I think I have somebody else. Representative Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do need to go back because there was actually something that's been triggered for me uh with the question that Senator uh Winfield was asking back at Article nine, Section C, and I want to know if you can tell me, is there any precise definition, right, of what would constitute an invasion of and his uh, her uh privacy? Like, is there anything that we can concretely look at that tells us what that is? So like, in other words, is there a way to challenge the agency's determination and invasion has been made?
It is not found in the collective bargaining agreement. Uh, but my understanding is that why there is F O I hearings, so that challenge could be brought.
Okay, because I think the concern would be that if it, if it's too loosely defined, you know, then we've got what, a rabbit hole for a better selection of words that we could go down and trying to determine whether it's valid, if there's any validity to it. So I think that is the thing that concerns me, that there's nothing that has been precisely defined in order to make this determination. And that was the reason for my question at the onset. Um, when I asked you about this article in this particular section. So I just want to state that for the record. That deeply concerns me.
I understand. Thank you, uh, Representative Porter. Uh, for me, having the, the legal counsel for, for the agency looking at it, um, provides some relief in terms of uh, the, the, the evaluation of, of that material.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from anybody? Representative Harrison.
I, thank you for allowing me to go again. Um, I'd like just some clarification. Um, you're saying that you're recruiting classes, and that's what's going to go through post-training is about thirty, I, I'm making, you know, you said thirty to forty, but let's make some math easy. And if I look at the numbers that you have and where you'd like to be for full staffing, you need about three hundred more uh troopers, am I correct so far? I think um. So eh, that means that you have to run about ten classes to get there. Uh, you're also going to have uh, you know, retirements and people who are leaving for various reasons, so you know, that fluctuates that staffing again. And it does take several months to get through the training program out there. So what's your expectation of how long is it going to take you to get to that full staffing?
Let me start at the beginning for you, if you wouldn't mind, please. Um, so today you have eight hundred and seventy-seven. Thirty-six in the academy today that are not counted in the eight seventy-seven. There's another class that's um being um background now. And when I say we'll be down to the thirties or forties, that's just the national trend. We were lucky earlier in my tenure where we came up with eighty-five to a hundred and one. But I am saying to my staffing report um effective um February first of twenty twenty-three, will again say, to be financially responsible and to cut the overtime, you need a thousand troopers. For me to get back to business with all the specialized units to help all the towns and cities, I'll be up around eleven hundred, if not eleven fifty. I still haven't seen those numbers on there as where I want to get to. Now, the last portion of your question, I estimate you can do three classes in a two-year cycle and maybe start a fourth. So at that point, I'm looking at almost two and a half years to get over a thousand.
So that means we could assume that we're going to be three to probably closer to four years perhaps to get to the numbers that you'd like to see.
The upper level numbers, yes.
And, and
You're going to be in the, yes.
And I do appreciate that there's um, you know, a fine line between it, it having the right number of employees, and sometimes it makes sense to pay overtime and not bring more employees on. I appreciate that. Um, and I understand that. Um, and I know that you're, you're certainly not there. Um, so uh, what I'd like to know, though, is, and, and there's no crystal ball. So do we have projected into these uh numbers that we're looking at as the analysis of this budget? Not only the number of classes that we're going to have to take, but you know, the adjustments of as you move people to special units, um, is all of that kind of included in these numbers?
Uh, Representative Harrison, I would just like to say that relative to the number of people that we need for the state police would be a better question for when we get to contract, when we get to budget discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Because they can't decide what we put in the budget. We put the numbers in the budget. And um, we have great debates, and all of you will be part of this. I hope you all signed up for different subcommittees. So when the subcommittee comes on, I, I'm getting questions relative to a number of different things that are more appropriate for the budget discussion than they are for the contract discussion. And I'm a little worried that we're straying from the exact uh, what was in the contract.
Uh, I, I do think that in order to analyze this with, you know, respect to everyone.
Yep.
Um, they, they certainly have a number um of troopers, excuse me, that they're that they're using for this, but I would think that you would also want to have some sort of a projection that figures into this because that's, that is a cost to the contract.
Well, it's not a cost to the contract, it's a cost of the budget. Um, it's not really a cost of the contract is one thing, the, the numbers you're talking about, because it's a complicated question that you're asking. It's not, ho- how many classes are we going to have? Can we have a first and second class? Senator Berthold said, how many people are going to retire over the next year? Those are all numbers that they have. But that is not part of the contract discussion that we're talking about. The contract discussion is a little bit di- different than what we are. Some people want to talk about a lot of different things, and you know, all due respect, I did shut down Representative Polinsky, and like, I feel obligated to call on him to see if he has any other questions, but the contract itself, the contract language itself is where we should stay too. Um, uh, Commissioner Ravel, can you provide to the Appropriations Committee the numbers of people that you expect to retire or eligible to retire over the next year? And uh, if you could provide for us a preview of what you're asking for, for classes over the next biennium, uh, so that we can get answers to, because everybody's going to have the same question that Representative Harrison has. I'm not saying that her questions are not appropriate. They are. They're just not appropriate necessarily for the contract. I think that they're more budgetary. So if you could send that to us and send that to uh the administrator, that would be appropriate. Representative Harrison, relative to the contract itself, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no, I think that's uh, fine. Any information you can provide to us relative to any of that would be helpful, though. Thank you.
Thank you. I, Representative Exum? No questions? Is any, uh, Representative Del Nicky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And uh, thank you for the presentation pertaining to the contract, but I'd just like to drill down a little bit on that contract. And can you amplify your answer on how that contract is going to help retain senior officers? The folks that you want on the job to bring the younger officers up to a high standard? How does the contract address that?
Thank you, Representative. It does a couple of things. One item that it does do is it provides what's called a top step bonus. So if a state employee, some of our contracts have built-in top step bonuses. If I am uh, a particular uh job classification, and after fifteen years of state service, I'm at the top step, my pay does not go up unless there's a general wage increase. I don't get the steps that junior employees get perhaps. So what this does is it provides an annual lump sum bonus uh, which is a percentage off their top step wage. So not only are there general wage increases, but they in effect get a step um, keeping, keeping a, a structured uh, pay cycle for them. The other thing it does do in terms of incentivizing the uh, more senior staff to work with the more junior staff is that field training officer uh pay, because during contract negotiations, I met with a few field training officers, and I sat down and, and said, tell me a day in the life of a field training officer. And uh, you know, oftentimes they spend extra time writing a report, coaching, assisting a, a trooper trainee and those kinds of things. Um, and uh having the opportunity to compensate them a little bit more for that, to give them a special, that special assignment uh, was another way to keep them engaged uh beyond maybe the, the twenty-year hallmark of their career. So I hope that answers your question.
So, so basically, if I understand you correctly, they get long- longevity pay, which was what you refer to as top step, right? And also the fact that if you're a F T O, Field Training Officer, you also get an incentive on that, because the longer we can keep the senior officers on on the job, the better. So as the junior officers come up, they have A, role models, and B, someone they could look up to and C, somebody that they can ask and get a candid answer. Is that, that sound correct?
I think that's accurate.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Del Nicky. Representative McCarty.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. Um, I, my question goes to section fifteen of the contract that talks about the five hundred dollar stipend that would be received on October first every year. Could you just provide benefit for all of us to understand how that uh, would there be some follow-up to that? How would that be used? Yeah, it, I, I believe it's a health and wellness stipend, the five hundred dollar health and wellness stipend, and it, it appears from the language that that would be uh given out on October first every year, and I'm just curious as to what that stipend would be used for, how that would be effectuated.
Yeah. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
So, we, eh, in the prior collective bargaining agreement, there was an annual amount of money that the agency would give each of the individual troops for some wellness activities, maybe updating uh uh, something that they had for a piece of fitness equipment at the troop or those types of things, and uh, that investment didn't seem particularly fruitful. Then the Commissioner came to me and, and uh and suggested the idea of a wellness stipend. So a lump sum amount where, where uh, a trooper could say, hey, I'm going to go get a, a, a membership at a, a local fitness facility for me and my family or something like that, which may be more beneficial to the trooper than trying to um uh, update some fitness equipment at a, at a troop or something like that. So the idea of that wellness stipend came in, and not everybody is, is necessarily going to pursue the same thing. You know, somebody else may decide to go get a yoga membership for their family or something of that nature. Uh, and the design of that was to incentivize uh troopers to take care of themselves and their families, and that's how it was explained to me by, by the Commissioner.
If I would, uh, I could add to that just a little bit. So it's not something we pull out of thin air, right? Um, President Obama and the Six Pillars, um, when I was chief in Hartford, uh, talked about Pillars Six, and really, and really the, the basis for that is if you have a healthy um, officer, sound mind, not worried about um you know, family issues, not worried about uh financial issues, um. you know, family issues, not worried about, uh, financial issues, um, and he's wellness and he's physical fit, you get a much better trooper. You get a much better police officer. Um, just going back a little bit, when I was in Hartford, boy, we, um, I spent a lot of that forfeiture money, um, on yoga. We spent it on classes for wellness. We spent it on, um, gyms. We spent it, uh, to make that officer, um, whole, right? And then, then we gave them options to come and, come and talk to us on different, uh, different levels. So we have a wellness sergeant, um, appointed to the position to coordinate this. So, um, we're hoping it takes some, um, some groundswell and troopers really realize that, um, um, the value of this money.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And I think it's a good concept and just would like to track to see, you know, and, and thank you for clarifying more what the, what it would be used for. Appreciate it.
Alrighty then, I see no, nobody else with their hands up? Physically, nobody else with their hands up on Zoom? So I think you're both all set right now. Thank you. Please stay, just in case somebody else has a question. Up next is, um, uh, Andy Matthews and Todd Fedigan, uh, the Executive Director of the Connecticut State Police Union and the President. Laura's yours.
Good afternoon, Senator Austin, Representative Walker, Senator, um, Barfield, Representative Narkio and distinguished members of the Appropriations Committee. My name's Andrew Matthews. I'm the Executive Director and Chief Negotiator for the Connecticut State Police Union. Also with me today is President Todd Fedigan, who's a, uh, uh, actively, uh, Master Sergeant, holds the rank of Master Sergeant within the Connecticut State Police. The State Police Union represents 841 troopers, sergeants and master sergeants and takes great pride in protecting all, uh, citizens of Connecticut. First, before we get started, we'd like to offer our condolences to the entire legislature for the loss of Representative Q. Williams and also to his family, uh, for the sacrifice that he, uh, had to suffer for the state of Connecticut. We appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today, uh, and we are here to speak in support of proposed SR number seven and HR number nine resolution proposing the approval of collective bargaining agreement between the state of Connecticut and the State Police Union MP1 Bargaining Unit. On behalf of our state troopers, we ask you to support the tentative agreement before you because over the past eight months, both the state and the union leadership negotiated in good faith to achieve a fair contract for both parties. This four-year agreement will enhance the state's ability to recruit and retain the most qualified troopers. And it ensures that those who risk their lives daily are fairly compensated for the responsibilities and dangers required of their profession. In 2009, the state police exceeded the then statutory mandate of 1,248 troopers with the total sworn staffing of 1,283 state troopers. Since April of 2018, the state police has experienced a significant number of retirements and has had difficulty recruiting to fill these vacancies. From January of 2018 through July of 2022, over 400 troopers, 401 to be exact, made the decision to retire or resign. Unfortunately, although we are, we're fortunate enough to have the support of Governor Lamont and the Appropriations Committee over the years, the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection has been unable to fulfill your commitment to funding numerous classes that were approved for up to 100 recruits. Although there are many reasons for this lack of interest in law, the law enforcement profession, we believe this tentative agreement is critical to changing this trend. This tentative agreement has been approved by our contract negotiation team, the Connecticut State Police Union Board of Directors and was overwhelmingly ratified by our 841 union members. This contract before you will assist the state, uh, with over many years of understaffing and will benefit the employer, our troopers, and most importantly, the residents of Connecticut. Based on the foregoing, we respectfully request that committee approve the proposed resolution and, uh, President Fedigan has a few comments as well.
Madam Chair, I thank you for this opportunity to speak before your committee today. Uh, as Andy stated, I'm Todd Fedigan. I am the President of the Connecticut State Police Union as of July of last year. I'm also an 18-year, uh, veteran and proud member of this department and I hold the rank of Master Sergeant. This contract is important to our membership. We've worked tirelessly the last several years, which has compounded due to the amount of retirements in our agency. As the commissioner stated, in the last four years, we lost approximately 357 members due to retirement. During the same four-year period, at some points during this, and more recently, we had no lieutenants. At another point, we had zero captains. Currently, as I speak before you today, we have no majors and one captain. This is thousands of years of leadership and experience which we can no longer rely upon. Also, our membership that I represent now has to take up that void in the work. Master sergeants took the role of lieutenants and so forth. So it's had a, a compounding effect, if you will. Our union is thankful for the efforts of Governor Lamont and this legislature for continually funding current and future training classes. The current class that our commissioner just spoke before you is 133rd. I met with him last week. They have 36 trainees. They're scheduled to graduate May of this year. The 132nd Training Troop, which was just before them, graduated 33 trooper trainees in October 22. Both of these classes, classes were budgeted for a class size of 100 per class. We will be fortunate enough to see 65 graduations out of the two classes. Our testing process to become a trooper has seen an average of about 1,000 applicants for the last several training classes. And we had to extend the most recent application deadline for the next class the commissioner spoke to you about due to lack of effort for our profession. This contract, I'm certain, will attract more applicants so we can properly staff our agency. Our troopers around the state are experiencing an exorbitant amount of order-ins and on many occasion forced double shifts. At Troop H alone, where I'm based out of, when I'm not doing union, uh, activities, we have seen the order and list grow up to 70 troopers a month, which is the highest level that I've seen in 10 years at Troop H. Retention is an important factor in this contract to retain those troopers who have experience. This will help answer Representative Harrison and Representative Del Nicky's, uh, questions. Currently, right now, the Colonel of the State Police sits two rows behind me. From the level of trooper up to him, for those members that have 20 years of state police service, there's only 17 members left. Throughout my first 12 or 13 years as a state trooper, I often counted throughout those years, we used to have 200 to 300 members who had 20 years of state police service. We're down to 17. As Governor Lamont stated, this new contract, and I quote, "This new contract provides financial and other incentives for the retention and recruitment of the best troopers and candidates. It is an investment in the future of public safety in our state by incentivizing the recruitment of top-quality candidates as well as the retention of our current troopers." On behalf of the membership that I represent, the Connecticut State Police, Police Union cannot agree more with his sentiment and this contract approval is vital to these efforts. I thank you all for your time.
Are there any other comments or questions? I have a lot of people with their hands up. Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna go to, um, Senator Gordon.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make certain, uh, that a, a point is clarified. I know you, you state, you stated this very well about recruitment and retention. I first of all, want to say a big thank you to the men and women of the state police for the work you guys do day and night, working to keep us safe and helping us in times of emergencies. I represent 13 towns in Northeast Connecticut. And on behalf of those people, thank you very, very much for the work you do. I just want to make it clear, you believe that this, uh, agreement as presented to us, uh, is a good way to try to make certain, not only we can recruit good candidates, but also retain them once they go through, uh, their training, but also the troopers we have now to make certain that they can stay with us throughout the length of their careers.
Yes, Senator, that is our hope.
Uh, Representative Nuccio.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, as much as I respect the commissioner and the role that he plays, I understand the administration role in these contracts and you guys, as far as I'm concerned, represent our officers first and foremost. No disrespect, sir. Um, so I know you're working directly with them to make sure they understand this contract. Um, I know morale is very low. I know order-ins are high. I know overtime is high because we just don't have enough officers. So in your negotiations with the officers, do you feel that this contract is gonna meet the needs that we have to A, combat the burnout, um, to also incent them, um, to continue on and can, and get us through, through the next few classes and such? But more importantly, as we have discussed multiple times here, is this what we need from the incentive purposes to make sure that everything that's in this contract is gonna, um, is gonna feed what we need for, um, retention going forward?
Representative Nuccio, I appreciate that question. Um, we do believe it's gonna help. Um, and this is something that I, I, I didn't add. Um, 2022 in July, because of SEABACK, we lost a, a ton of membership with that experience. Most of our upper management left. The next class that is eligible is October 24 to 41 troopers. The next big, uh, wave is, uh, July of 27, when they're gonna renegotiate possibly SEABACK. There's three more classes in our agency that can retire up to J- July of 27 to the tune of 154 more troopers. And, uh, just, we're not seeing the numbers apply to this job anymore and, and recruiting and hiring 30 to 40 at a clip. Uh, it's gonna take several years to achieve that, but we think this contract will help.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Representative Nolan, followed by Representative Del Nicky.
I, I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna get away with these questions, but I want to ask just in case.
Don't ask the questions if you're not gonna get away with them, Representative Nolan. Why bother? Why do you want me to be the mean one in the room?
He made some statements and I just want clarity on them.
Oh, please stop.
Yeah.
Relative to the contract, Representative Nolan, do you have any questions? Sometimes the speakers ad lib a little bit. That does not mean the representatives get to follow.
I'm, I'm gonna go on a.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll get a, if I need.
Yep.
Um, you, you, you mentioned, uh, earlier in your conversation that, um, we, we lost 200 officers that, you know, we normally didn't, we normally had. And I was just wondering, is that directed, you think, to, because of the SEABACK agreement or, or what was that?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, many different issues over the years. Over the past four years, it's been almost, uh, slightly over 400. And that's because I think one of the biggest factors was because of the changes in the pension and the healthcare calculations. That's a fair statement. Uh, people told us that and that's why they all left before, uh, June 30th of 2022. Now, uh, will that continue? Uh, that's to be determined by the legislature and SEABACK when they ne- negotiate the next round of SEABACK 2027.
Okay.
Whether that.
Don't say no more, because I don't want to get in trouble.
No, you're not in trouble. That's a good question.
So, and the next question is, you also said, made a statement in regards to, um, having 100 people in the academy and only 60, um, sometimes graduating. Um, what is the problem that we're having in the academy that these, okay, cadets are not graduating?
Yeah, so to, uh, to support and, and to echo what Commissioner Ravella, Ravella said. Um, years ago, when I was a former sergeant in the state police, did 20 years, um, I was also the union president for eight years during that time. So I come to you with that respect, uh, from that respect. And when we applied to the job many years ago, uh, we'd have between 12 and 15,000 people apply for the job. Uh, today you see about 1,000. Uh, and that's a national trend. It's not just here in Connecticut. It's no, it's not a, a localized problem. It's everywhere. There are states, uh, we're part of the, I'm the Executive Director of the National Troopers Coalition as well. And out west, some states are, uh, doing recruitment bonuses, signing bonuses of $30,000. So it's a, it's a problem throughout the country. Um, we think that this, could this deal be better? Yes, we could do more. Um, but we think this is a fair deal to both sides and we think it will help, uh, recruit and retain uh, some of the institutional knowledge and the people we need to continue to serve Connecticut.
Thank you. And I just wanted to be known I survived.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say for the record that going to a defined, uh, away from a defined benefit plan onto a hybrid 401k was a bad decision. Let's just move on. Representative Del Nicky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is probably, or should be addressed to the President of the Union because you've got your ear to the ground. You hear from the people that work in the department specifically as it pertains to the contract. Does this, or how does this contract improve morale?
This helps the ability of a trooper to take care of their family. There, there's some members that are coming on, newer members, um, that we're finding don't work as much as some of the senior members. So it compensates them better to take care of their families and, and may just incentivize them to lessen the amount of order-ins that we're experiencing, which are the highest levels, like I said, I've ever seen.
So would it be safe to say, and I'll just have one more question, say, safe to say that the contract as structured actually benefits not just the troopers, but their families also?
That's completely accurate, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I think, I can't really quite see, is that Representative Kennedy on the other side over there? Representative Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, actually, my question was, uh, asked and answered by Representative Nolan, but just take it a little bit further. You had said a lot of the, uh, retirements were due to the SEABACK contracts. Do you know if any of the, um, officers that are leaving are going to other departments? Are they going to municipalities or other states? Thank you.
Uh, we don't keep track of how many, but we do know that a significant number of state troopers that have retired have gone to local police departments or have become constables within, uh, resident trooper towns.
Thank you for your response. I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you. Um, Representative Fonachella, did you have a question, sir? Oh, no, I don't raise my hand anymore. We're good. Uh, Senator Berthold, followed by Representative Balinski.
All right, I'll try not to get in trouble either. Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, first of all, thank you for your service to the great people of our great state and the, uh, and for representing the men and women that you do. We appreciate what you do, uh, even if there are times when, uh, you're unappreciated. So I, we, we just spoke a lot about some numbers and I just want to make sure that just for the purpose of, uh, maybe I'll stop other people from asking questions. The commissioner spoke to 1,150 would be the ideal number. Would a full, full staffing to get a lot of good things done, reinstate some services. You just spoke to 200 retirements over the next three years. Um, you're recruiting 60, you said 41 in, in October of 24, 154 in July of 27 potentially.
Senator, the next three classes that are eligible before July of, uh, 27 is 154 troopers. That's three, three classes worth.
Total. Okay. Thank you for the clarification, but you're saying that we're recruiting only and successfully graduating only 60 on average per class?
I'll correct that. That was 65 for two classes. The current class currently has 36. The previous class graduated 33.
So my question is this. Thank you for the clarification, sir. The, uh, with all of what we're doing with this contract to help and all of what you just spoke to, morale, better, better, uh, uh, family experiences for our troopers, can we, can we get to a full, uh, bill? Can we get to that 1,150? And what, what effort is it going to take beyond what we're, what we're trying to get it done today?
$30,000 signing bonuses? Okay. Uh, no, in all.
And I want you, Senator Berthold, to pass that in appropriations when we go to put that in. Just saying. I got a few other things to put in the budget too. Just looking for some votes.
Actually, we prefer $30,000 retention bonus.
Yeah.
But, uh, no, in all seriousness, I think one of the things that people aren't factoring into this contract is the effect that this will have, the positive effect on recruitment.
Okay.
Attention. I, um, I represent, uh, all state troopers in the country, 42,000 of them. And I can tell you that I've had conversations recently because people do look at Connecticut because we're a leader and they see the benefits in the package that we offer. It's often difficult to ha- attract someone from a local police department or a state, other state police agency that's been there more than three to four years.
Sure.
Because they're already committed, invested, right? So a lot of the junior kids are looking, especially Rhode Island, I represent them, negotiate on behalf of them as well. Uh, they, they look and they're now look, people are starting to look at other contracts and see what really is offered, not just in wages, but other benefits. So I think people, that the numbers aren't considering the positive impact this contract will have.
Okay. And thank you, Madam Chair, if I may just, thank you for that. And, and you kind of anticipated what, what I, what I was thinking. It wasn't necessarily a question, but the, this new contract and these new, uh, scales and, and, and all of what is coming along with it are going to position Connecticut as a really great place for, uh, a young person, a, a law enforcement officer transitioning maybe from a municipal department to want to sign up to become a trooper. Is that what you're saying? to want to sign up to become a trooper. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we think that Connecticut would show its commitment to law enforcement and the protection of the public by approving this contract, and you will, we believe firmly that you will attract and retain the best qualified and best people.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Representative Belinski, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Fredigan, for the work that you do. I, I, I think it's safe to say that my constituents and I want to see a fully staffed Connecticut State Police force. We depend on you for our well-being and for the stability in our everyday lives. In regard to this contract. The ability to take care of one's family is is a pretty basic human need and, and that's pretty clearly understood. And, and you're assuring us that, that this contract and we will, in, in fact, take care of that. My experience and, you know, in, in life and staffing and things like that is that there's, there are intangibles in life, in one's job satisfaction. Did we do anything besides address the financial component in this contract to create a better life, a better job satisfaction, a feeling of you know, the state leadership having the backs of, of our troopers? Have we done something to, to make their job satisfaction? Something that never makes them shudder and hesitate to go to work?
I appreciate the question. Before I respond, on behalf of our troopers, we all responded to Newtown, so we think of your constituents and you often, long past that day. It's a horrible day. And but the, the staffing levels of the state police at that time were greater than what they are today, and you saw the response that we had. We should always want that regardless of what community it is. But I would say, what else have we done? Listen, finances for everyone, including the people in this room help you have a better quality of life and be able to care for your one's family, right? It takes stresses off. The commissioner's commitment to mental health and physical health is, is, is another way of showing that you value your employees. And that's what the union fights for every day. We, we work hard to make sure not only that our people are able to take care of their families, but that the command staff recognizes how we can make people's lives less stressful to make them show that they're more appreciated. And I think that goes a long way in improving morale as well. So hopefully I answer your question.
To, to, to some degree, and I, I wanna thank you also for making the reference that you made to my community, which we'll always remember how you surrounded our families. So thank you very much for that, sir. At the risk of having to suffer a body blow or two later.
You know, I'm really getting the sense that I'm the mean one here in the room.
I would, I would, I would just like to, 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 to lay out something that would be like a, the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room.
Let's not. Let's not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
My goodness. Okay, I see another, yes, I'm sorry, I don't know your name. What is it? Hoxa? Representative Hoxa, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First of all, I would just like to, you know, reiterate, you know, some of the sentiments made by my fellow colleagues that have expressed appreciation and admiration for what you do. And also, you know, join in on that. If you could, I know that this was briefly brought up before in terms of overall competitiveness of the, you know, what you're asking for in this bill compared to neighboring states. If you could, I mean, you know, without accounting for any potential renegotiations in neighboring states, just from your knowledge of, you know, salaries and benefits of, of state police officers in, in neighboring states in New England, New York, New Jersey, let's not go any further than that. Just in the general geographic area, how would you rank this? Should this bill pass, how would you rank the competitiveness of what you're asking for in this bill compared to our neighbors?
It's a great question. I'll try to be brief. Take, for example, New York State Police. They, they have geographical pay. If you're in New York City or Long Island, they're the highest paid troopers in the country. They're currently at a hundred and forty-two thousand base after twenty-five years. If you compare it to eight years of service like this contract would approve, those troopers in New York are about a hundred and thirty thousand after eight years of service. New York is the highest paid, let's be fair. Massachusetts tops out at five years. Effective, I believe it was twenty twenty, twenty twelve, they lost what was called the Quinn Bill where they received thirty percent more on their base for having a degree, advanced degree. As of twenty twelve, they no longer offer that, so for the last ten years, eleven years. Their recruit, their highest paid troopers after six years, I believe it is, is ninety-seven thousand. Rhode Island troopers I represented just did a contract for them. They're at eighty-six thousand after six years. Although we negotiated a, a, a trooper, a higher bump at ten years for them. Another increase. A lot of different states to dissect every single state police contract in the country. I will tell you, there are other states that got higher general wage increases due to the inflation over the last two years. So although we think two and a half percent was what everybody else got, and we agree to that under this agreement. It's, it's risky if you were to go to arbitration and we, we see in other states where people are getting six to eight percent in one year. So hopefully that helps answer your question, give you a different perspective. So we just think that, again, this is a fair. And remember the two percent lump sum, for those that are concerned about that for top step troopers, not only does that help retain them, it's not compounded every year annually, so that's something we thought was fair.
All set, Representative Hoxa? Thank you. Representative Ruttigliano, do you have a question, sir?
Well, Madam Chair, there was a few of us over here that were interested in Representative Beliski's question. I didn't understand what the eight hundred pound thing.
We all understand what the eight hundred pound gorilla is.
I, I don't know if I necessarily do.
You and I will have a private conversation after this then.
I thought it would be important if he could ask.
And if not relative to the contract, though.
So if the contract is discussing retention and recruitment, is it just a financial thing for people to not want to be police officers? Is there something else the legislature could do to make people more apt to become police officers or apply to the state police? Is there any other legislation that we passed that maybe dissuades people from entering the profession?
So Representative Ruttigliano, you and I could, I, on, on a serious note, not to disrespect you at all, because I really respect what you have to say. That conversation is more for the floor of the Public Safety Committee, of which I'm the vice chair. I think you're, are you on that committee now?
I am not on that committee.
Oh, I'm, weren't you on that committee before?
No.
Oh, come on, you should come on to that committee with us. Talk about some of the things that you're talking about. I mean, I'm on seven committees. You're not on seven.
No, no, I'm not on seven.
But let's, let's, let's get this moving here. So what we have is a financial package here that also deals with some things. Quite frankly, the biggest reason why we lost state employees across the bar is because we went to a four oh one, hybrid four oh one K. Everybody says that. That is the reason why we can't get teachers, that's the reason why we can't get nurses, that's the reason why we can't get police officers, that's the reason why we can't get correctional officers, where I worked for twenty-one years. So let's, let, that is the number one reason. That's why everybody retired. That's why we had the, the, the cliff. So we're not gonna talk anymore about other pieces of legislation. We can talk about just the contract because I have my own opinions on some of the things here, and I think that this is a very good contract. I plan on supporting it, and I'm hoping all my colleagues support it. So does anybody have any other questions relative to the contract? Representative Porter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm gonna just switch gears a little bit here. I've been sitting here looking at the contract, and I'm looking at Article fourteen where it pertains to the grievance procedure. Then I'm looking at the testimony. That was given, oh my gosh, from, what's her name, Colleen Murphy. And I just had a couple of questions because it's actually saying that Section thirteen in particular
Excuse me, Representative Porter, but just so people understand what you're referencing, for those of you who have your computer. Colleen Murphy is, works for the FOI Commission, and she, she's the head of the FOI Commission. I'm sorry, mean to say, just works at. She provided written testimony that is online right now, written testimony. So if you wanna look at the written testimony that's been provided to us online, I'm sorry, Representative Porter.
That is correct, and that's fine. Thank you for the clarification. I'm specifically looking at Article fourteen, Section thirteen of her testimony on page two of her testimony. And she states that Article fourteen, Section thirteen of the current collective bargaining agreement provides that, quote, the parties agree the grievance and arbitration procedure to be a private matter and therefore not open to the public or the media, end quote. And she says such provision supersedes the General Statute one dash two two five in its entirety, right? So after I read through that, I think the thing that's concerning is that she goes on to state the public's right to accept, access public hearings as recognized in the FOI Act and our court decisions. Where evidence and argument are offered in support of or against a filed grievance should not be contracted away by the language of a collective bargaining agreement. Rather, such decisions should only be made after robust debate, deliberation, and enactment of statutes. So can you just speak to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate the question. I was hoping you would ask questions so I could address. So this, this contract language has been here for decades, I believe, and it's not only in our contract, but it's in every state contract, I believe. And the reason that's in there is that, that is, that's not to say that the findings of the arbitration, the testimony, the transcripts, the disposition of an investigation, or the discipline is not subject to FOIA or released prevented from being released to the public. What that says is if we're having an arbitration, we don't bring people from the public in while the arbitration is proceeding. Once the proceedings are done and the arbitration arbitrator has ruled, that's public information. Once the case is concluded. And I'm sure the undersecretary could comment on that as well. I haven't seen her testimony yet. I was busy preparing for today, but I'll take a look at it. I have a lot of respect for her and her position.
Thank you for that response. Was there anything you wanted to add to that? No? Okay. Thank you, and thank you for putting that on the record because that was a concern that came to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Was foible, was not, and the fact that it should be made public. So you're saying that it would be made public after the grievance procedure with the things that you've outlined here in Article fourteen for this contract for us, correct?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's, it's foible at the conclusion of the grievance and the arbitration, if it goes to arbitration. If it's resolved by stipulated agreement or it's withdrawn, the moment it's withdrawn or there's stipulated agreement or an arbitrated decision, it's public information.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. I'm gonna close the public hearing now. And we're going to immediately go into a and I believe that, so we are in a committee meeting, but we are going to go into caucus right now. And Madam Administrator, if you could tell us where we are going, we're going to try to do this in about fifteen minutes, maybe thirty minutes at, at large, so we'll start with fifteen and let you know if we're coming back then. Madam Administrator?
Yes, the Democratic Caucus will be held in this room, in Room two C. And the Republican Caucus in Room two D, as in David.
Is there a Zoom link? Do we have a Zoom link there?
I don't think we do have a Zoom link for our caucuses. I didn't see one. This is Heather Summer speaking to you, so I'm, I'm just gonna hang here until it's time to vote.
Thank you, Heather.
That's a meal within itself.
That's a meal within itself, like...
...caucus, right?
Here. Okay, that's important, mine. Putting these on each side of your... Don't say anything yet until we get out of the room. Taylor? Kathy, don't say anything while we can watch.
How?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Turn off your mic.
Turn off your mic.
There you go. Woo-hoo. Yay. So, we're gonna start getting ready for the next piece of this. And we're gonna reconvene the meeting and all due respect to my chairs and ranking members, no remarks right now, we can do that at the end. We have two resolutions and we'll start with Senate Resolution Number Seven. So I'll entertain a motion for Senate Resolution Number Seven by a Senator.
So moved.
Proposing approval of a collective bargaining agreement between the State of Connecticut and the Connecticut State Police Union, MP One Bargaining Unit has been moved by Senator Barthol. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Senator Gordon. Discussion. See, Senator Barthol.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think we learned a lot in the public hearing about the importance of this resolution. You know, one thing that was very loud and clear was that this contract ultimately will help the State of Connecticut to rebuild and restore its Connecticut State Police Department. And we know over time and history that this is a department that has been recognized, you know, arguably for the best uniforms year after year, but all kidding aside, for delivering some of the highest quality public safety and enforce some of our laws and keeping the people in our state safe and the visitors that travel through our state safe. I think what this contract also does, which was articulated by some of our testifiers, is it allows the legislature to restore and to show some respect back to our law enforcement in the state police and perhaps throughout all of our cities and towns. We will restore some confidence in the work that our law enforcement is doing. And as I asked in my question during the public hearing, that we will potentially and hopefully make Connecticut one of the best places where someone who wants to pursue a career in law enforcement or wants to make a change to where they currently work to come and join the Connecticut State Police. The one thing that I think we need to air out, though, is, and I realize that we were sticking strictly to discussion on the contract, which we are not limited to at this moment in time, is that the Police Accountability Bill that we passed in the summer of 2020 also has had an effect on the retention and retaining and hiring of police officers in Connecticut. While we're not here to discuss the Police Accountability Bill itself, I think we would be remiss if we did not, and I'm putting it on the record here now, if we did not acknowledge that that is a mitigating factor in recruitment and retention of police officers in the Connecticut State Police Department as well as across our cities and towns in Connecticut. So I will proudly vote in favor of this resolution and certainly when it hits the floor in our chamber in favor of that as well. And I encourage all members to vote in favor of this resolution today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. I would have to say that I think that there's a lot more to this than that. I have been here for more than ten years now. And I voted for every contract, put in the budget millions of dollars to support police officers and their necessities. And discussed on the floor more than anybody else in this room, the Police Accountability Bill. And I saw often that people had never, ever, ever supported a single contract that came through this legislature. And I found that to be disrespectful to the men and women who work in the State of Connecticut. And I can't tell you how many times I passed in a state budget millions of dollars of support for police officers and recruitment and retention and talked about additional classes to make sure that we were getting people into this job. Twenty-one years I worked for the Department of Correction, in the floor, not behind fences, inside the walls of that job. I know exactly how hard it is to do that kind of work. And I also know it takes more than just one piece of legislation to detract from people. Yes, it was a hard piece of legislation. Quite frankly, it was hard to vote for millions of dollars of support for police officers and when people tell me that they believe in police officers and they don't walk the walk as well as talk the talk, then I'm sorry, I disagree with that. So we could talk about the Police Accountability Bill, not appropriate today, it's not appropriate now, and it's not appropriate for this vote because this is a moment when we could come together to show those people that are coming into a revered profession, a revered profession. And the fact is, is that we should come together and not pick apart the fact that you may never have voted for a collective bargaining agreement before today. I think that you had your reasons for doing that. And I'm not going to disrespect you that way, and I will not take disrespect for any member of our caucus who voted for that, for that, because it's a much more complicated discussion than a soliloquy here today. I know how I feel about police officers. I know what I've done. When they talked about police officers, state police officers going to Sandy Hook, my cousin was one of those police officers that went to Sandy Hook. I know what it's like. I've seen members of my former profession kill themselves over the work that they did. I know what it's like. I've watched it over and over and over again. So I remember fighting for post-traumatic stress. Took me six years to get people to listen to it because they said we shouldn't have to worry about post-traumatic stress because that's part of their job. No, it's not part of their job. And we still haven't finished the work there. So let's, let's talk about what we have in front of us today. This contract today, and this contract today will bring us all together. So, Madam Administrator, if you could call the roll for the Senate Resolution, I'd appreciate it.
Senator Austin.
Senator Austin, proudly in the affirmative.
Senator Hartley. Senator Barthel.
Senator Barthel votes in the affirmative.
Senator Anwar.
Senator Anwar votes yes.
Senator Flexer. Senator Flexer. Senator Gordon.
Senator Gordon votes yes and is proud to do so.
Senator Kushner.
Senator Lesser votes in the affirmative.
Well, that would be lovely, Senator Lesser, if I had called your name, but hang on there just for a second there.
Okay, hang in there.
Hang in there. Senator Kushner. Senator Lesser.
Well, Senator Lesser's still here, sorry about that.
Thank you, sir. Senator Marks.
Senator Marks votes yes.
Senator McCrory. Senator Slapp. Senator Summers. Senator Winfield.
Senator Winfield, any affirmative.
Are there any Senate members of the Appropriations Committee who have not yet cast their vote but would like to do so at this time?
Madam Administrator, could we leave the vote?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Senator Kushner.
I'm sorry, I would like to vote.
So Senator Kushner? Would you repeat what you said, please, Madam?
Madam Administrator, I'm sorry if you called the vote, I missed it.
Yes, ma'am, I did. So would you like to cast your vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, my computer, you could hear me, but I couldn't hear you. I apologize. Senator Kushner votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Summers is here.
Hi, how would you like to vote?
Senator Summers votes yes.
Thank you. Senator Hartley?
Thank you, Madam Administrator, apologies out of order. Senator Hartley in the affirmative.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Administrator, if we could leave the votes open and we'll decide after the House how long that will be. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call House Resolution Number Nine, Resolution Proposing Approval of a Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the State of Connecticut and the Connecticut State Police Union. May I have the motion?
The motion. Representative Dayton?
The item has been moved by Representative Nolan and seconded by Representative Dayton. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Representative Nuchio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Listening to this today has been very enlightening and I'm happy to hear it. I understand and respect both what Senator Barthol was saying and also what Senator Austin was saying. And I think that kind of gets to the complexities of what this contract represents. Our police are our absolute first responders. When we're in trouble, we call, they come, no question. That is not something that I ever feel that we can ever truly compensate and say thank you enough for. In our time of need, they are the people that we reach out to. This contract is, it represents a multifaceted step forward that I think our police need. Nationally, it's been, it's been rough to be a police officer, and I know lots of people who've reconsidered or thought about not doing it or just said, no, I can't do it. So the fact that the State of Connecticut has taken this step to recognize the work that is being done, I don't think, I don't think it could ever not be good enough, right? So for me, I know personally, I know the morale is low. I know calls are high. I know overtime is high. And when you have that, you have police officers who aren't always out there at top of their game, and that's because we just don't have enough. And if this contract is gonna give us what we need to start increasing those numbers and start bringing back the respect and diligence that we need in the police force, I am wholeheartedly here to support it. And I respect the fact that this is a complex, this is a complex thing to talk about. But I very, very proudly will support this contract and hope to see that this carries us forward to having more people step up to be the people that we need when we call 911, to be the people that are gonna be there to help us, because without them, we have absolute chaos. And I appreciate everything that has been done today to bring this forward, and I look forward to voting yes for it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Yes, Representative Balinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very proud to say that I will be voting to support this contract and also wanted to again acknowledge the work of our troopers. And since the day I set foot in this building, I've always been a yes on our state police contracts and a lot of it, well, a lot of it is because I just can't see any other alternative. So I wish you all Godspeed and look forward to passage and encourage my colleagues to vote yea as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Representative Nolan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be supporting this contract. I just want to say that it's been a long time, I think, that the State of Connecticut has recognized police officers to elevate their salaries and benefits as such. Having the experience for a few more months, I think it's so beneficial for the municipalities to see this and hope that it triggers the ability for them to start considering to upscale what police should be making and how they should be paid. I'm glad to be here during this vote to support, though it's taken a long time and though some have differences in some of the things that have been done in the past, I really think that it's beneficial for our state police. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I want to thank everybody today for the debate. I want to thank everybody for expressing themselves. I too believe that this is an important contract, but I also believe that this is just one of many issues that this state has to go through. This is a critical frontline for our communities, but so are the teachers and so are the nurses and so are all the other frontline people who have gotten us through the last three years of crisis. We are woefully underfunding many agencies and many professions that we need desperately in Connecticut. We need families to have the ability to thrive. I was appreciative of the fact that we talked about the families of the police officers and the state police because we forget that these impact more than just one individual directly. So I ask all my colleagues to please remember this enthusiasm and commitment and drive that we have today for our state police, and we hold it for education and for teachers and for nurses and everyone else who has gotten us through these crises three years. So with that, Madam Administrator, would you please call the roll?
Representative Walker. Try that one more time for me. Representative Walker votes.
Representative Walker votes enthusiastically, yes.
Representative Exum.
Representative Exum votes yes.
Representative Paris.
Representative Paris votes yes.
Representative Nuccio.
Absolutely, 100%.
Representative Nuccio votes absolutely 100%, yes. If you could say that for me, ma'am, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, 100% yes.
Representative Nuccio.
Oh, I'm sorry, Representative, wait, but they say Representative Nuccio. Representative Nuccio votes absolutely 100% yes for the third time, three times.
With enthusiasm, I got it. Representative Baker.
Representative Baker votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Balinski.
Representative Balinski is proud to vote yea.
Representative Callahan.
Representative Callahan votes yes.
Representative Candelaria.
Representative Candelaria.
So I ask all my colleagues to please remember this enthusiasm and commitment and drive that we have today for our state police, and we hold it for education and for teachers and for nurses and everyone else who has gotten us through these crises three years. So with that, Madam Administrator, would you please call the roll?
Representative Walker. Try that one more time for me. Representative Walker votes.
Representative Walker votes enthusiastically, yes.
Representative Exum.
Representative Exum votes yes.
Representative Paris.
Representative Paris votes yes.
Representative Nuccio.
Absolutely, 100%.
Representative Nuccio votes absolutely 100% yes. If you could say that for me, ma'am, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, 100% yes.
Representative Nuccio.
Oh, I'm sorry, Representative, wait, did they say Representative Nuccio? Representative Nuccio votes absolutely 100% yes for the third time, three times.
With enthusiasm, I got it. Representative Baker.
Representative Baker votes yes.
Thank you. Representative Balinski.
Representative Balinski is proud to vote yea.
Representative Callahan.
Representative Callahan votes yes.
Representative Candelaria.
Representative Candelaria votes yes.
Representative Chalovsky.
Representative Chalovsky votes yes.
Representative Curry. Representative Curry. Representative Dayton.
Representative Dayton votes yes.
Representative DiCaprio.
Representative DiCaprio votes yes.
Representative Delaney.
Representative Delaney votes yes.
Representative Del Nicky.
Representative Del Nicky, a wholehearted yes.
Representative Dillon.
Representative Dillon votes yes.
Representative Felipe.
Representative Felipe votes yes.
Representative Foncello.
Madam Chair, Representative Foncello votes yes in support of our state police.
Representative Garabey.
Representative Garabey votes yes.
Representative Gibson.
Representative Gibson votes yes.
Representative Gilchrist.
Representative Gilchrist votes yes.
Representative Gonzalez. Representative Haddad.
Representative Haddad votes yes.
Representative Hall. You're the only one, Joshua, now, so. The one and only Representative Hall. Are you there? All right, I'll circle back. Representative Harrison.
Representative Harrison votes yes.
Representative Hoxa.
Representative Hoxa votes yes.
Representative Johnson.
Representative Johnson votes yes.
Representative Kana.
Representative Kana votes yes.
Representative Kennedy.
Kennedy votes yes.
Representative McCarty.
Representative McCarty votes yes.
Representative Nolan.
Nolan votes yes.
Representative Porter.
Representative Porter votes in the affirmative.
Representative Osborne.
With personal gratitude, Representative Osborne votes yes.
Representative Reyes.
Representative Reyes votes in the affirmative.
Representative Rosario.
Representative Rosario votes in the affirmative.
Representative Ruttigliano. Representative Ryan.
Representative Ryan votes yes.
Representative Sanchez.
Representative Sanchez votes yes.
Representative Sims.
Representative Sims votes in the affirmative.
Representative Tersiak.
Representative Tersiak votes yes.
Representative Zalastowski.
Representative Zalastowski votes yes.
All right, do we have Representative Curry? Or Representative Hall? Hey, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Administrator. We have, we're going. Can we leave both resolutions open until 5 o'clock, Madam Administrator? We certainly can, and I will, ah, Senator McCrory.
Hey, I was going to tell you I'm here.
I know. On this big, wide, beautiful screen, Senator McCrory, how would you like to vote, sir?
Give me a Y E S, spells yes, yeah.
Senator McCrory votes, follow me, Senator McCrory votes Y E S.
Senator McCrory votes Y E S.
Thank you, sir.
This is Representative Hall.
Hey, Representative Hall, how would you like to vote, sir?
Representative Hall votes yes.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, we will leave the vote open until 5 o'clock in Room 2C and on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Madam Administrator. So because we're not, we're not going to end the meeting, we'll leave the meeting open until 5 o'clock. Madam Administrator, do we have any other business that will be coming before the Appropriations Committee?
We do, but I'll be darned if I can remember the date. This has been a day, kids. We've got Medicaid 101 coming on the horizon. I want to say the 30th. Somewhere around January 30th, but you'll be getting a notice from.
Okay, well, we'll be in session before that, so January 25th, for those of you who are interested in what our business will be that day. So I think that's it right now. So the meeting is, will not, say it again, we're in recess until 5 o'clock. Thank you.
I don't know, I gotta go find out. I know May. I'm not here Friday, I'm not here Friday. Senator Flexer, hi.
Hi, Senator Flexer votes yes.
Thank you, ma'am. I could see her online.